No answered my question.
You are recording.
Do you like that dodge of that question? Tony?
Hey.
Do you like how I avoided that question?
Ah, I did.
We both did.
The earlier you put out the least amount of people you have questioning when you step aside.
He was.
I said, I wonder what y'all are talking about.
Yeah, you know. All right, I'll go ahead and call this work session of the Kingston City Council to order. Ask everyone to please stand. Ask Mr. Brown if he'd lead us in the invocation. Ms. Johnson's gonna lead us in the place with the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you again with grateful hearts, thanking you for the privilege of being here tonight to make the decisions for the city of Kingston. We would ask that you would be with us and lead us and guide us and direct us so we make those right decisions for our constituents. We ask that you be with those that are sick, be with Tommy and his family as they've gone through these sad times, and just be with everybody. I know that you can wrap your loving arms around them and give them some comfort. But most of all, we come here again tonight thanking you for your son who died on the cross for our sins, and we'll give you praise every day. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice around.
Thank you. May be seated. Do we have any citizens that wish to address the City Council tonight? If you do, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to bring your issues forward. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the council? Seeing them, I'm going to have a full discussion of issues regarding water leak relief. Councilmember Redwell and Ben Whitson from Water Lake Relief.
Yes, it's come to my attention on a lot of stuff on that, that I thought it was when you called them, that they would give somebody, you know, people that they could call, but the way they're doing it right now, so when you call the insurance company, they're making you call the plumbing company, and then they're coming out and fixing it. And that's not giving other plumbers a chance to be able to do the work or anything. And I didn't think that's what we talked about before. I thought they would, you know, have a recommendation of few plumbers that you could use, but they're not doing that.
Okay. Mr. Whitson, would you like to come in to address this, please?
Ben Whitson with Water Lake Relief, and happy to address that. When we started doing this across the whole entire state, our number one obligation is to take care of customers that can't afford the high water bills. That's where this all started. And one of the biggest complaints we often got was we would have customers that had issues finding plumbers. And that wasn't necessarily the case here, but across the state, that seemed to be a big issue. So one of the reasons that we started a plumbing company was to alleviate that, make the whole claims process go much, much smoother. But one of the other main reasons that we did it was price consideration. So we were facing some very, very, very expensive plumbing bills. And one of the things that I did not feel right about doing was just passing that cost along to customers. So the way we alleviated that was to kind of get outside the box. So we said, well, we'll start a plumbing company. We'll handle as much of it in-house as we can. Now, does that mean that we want no outside plumbers doing any jobs? No. But often the case is, there's always been two estimates required. So a plumber shows up, gives a first quote. We're gonna get the second call, so we do go give a quote, which we can do it much cheaper because my goal is not to make money as a plumbing company, but to help alleviate that cost to Water Lake Relief so that I do not have to go up on prices to the water customers of the utilities we cover across the state.
But could you not do, you know, recommend certain plumbers, and then you come out and give, you know, just like the insurance companies do, you know, they come out and give an estimate on a car, and they recommend so many people, but you can take it some places. I just don't think it's right that, say, for an example, me, I've been with a customer, real good friend, wanted me to do the work, and y'all told him I could not. You have no idea what I would charge.
Sure.
I could be reasonable, you don't know for sure, but you told that customer that I could not do the work.
They shouldn't have told a customer they cannot use, it's a homeowner's obligation, use whoever they like.
But it happened twice.
What we have encountered is we're getting to situations where, to kind of go through the numbers of it. In Roan County specifically, the plumbing jobs were costing us three times what they were across the whole entire state. We had to figure out what, how we could best resolve that. We started out with the multiple estimates so that we could at least verify that was not alleviating problem. The cost just continued to go up and up and up, and we do not want to take work away from anybody locally. But I had to resolve that issue one way or the other, and I did not want to do it by causing your water customers' rate to go, because that's a sensitive subject. I mean, I've not talked to a utility yet that is not concerned with water rates and what's on that water bill. So this has proven already that we have had dramatic cost savings by us being able to do the greater majority of the work in a two-hour radius that we can serve. Now, I have utilities across the state that I can't get to, and we do have some trusted plumbers that are able to do those jobs. And in the end, I mean, I really just felt like I was doing what's best for the Kingston water customers by helping reduce the cost so that I didn't have to go up on their price for the service that we agreed to provide in the first place.
Mr. Bowlen.
Ben, explain, and tell me if I've got this right or not, because I may be wrong, but the way it was explained to me was that, you know, they get the two estimates, one from whoever, and you guys, your people do the estimate. Once they come in, once your people quote a price for the job, they could use whoever they wanted, but you would only pay what your estimate was. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So if your guys came in and said it'll be twenty-five hundred dollars, I'm just using that as an example, they could go to any plumber, but if the other plumber said it'll be four thousand, you only pay twenty-five hundred.
And the reality of it is, is most of the time, the homeowner just says, well, then just go ahead and do it if you're doing it cheaper. Because it does help reduce their exposure as far as the insurance goes, because they get ten thousand dollars worth of coverage. If we can do it for twenty-five hundred, that's saving them a little bit of room in that maximum coverage by us doing it and doing it cheaper. So they may be able to get two or three jobs done. Typically, that doesn't happen, but if needed. I do, there's an example of one where I know a customer's sewer line has been giving them issues, cleaned it out, cleaned it out a second time. We were able to do that whole thing for, I think, fifteen hundred dollars. They were quoted, I think it was around eight thousand dollars by a company that I won't name, because they do serve a much greater area than just Roan County, Cumberland County. But they would have almost maxed out their insurance. We were able to do two different cleanouts, and them still have eighty-five hundred dollars worth of coverage.
But just to be clear, if your estimate's twenty-five hundred, if somebody else will do it for that price, it's completely up to the customer.
Now, one thing, another, yes.
Thank you for the question.
But the other thing that we have encountered is a lot of times, there's not licensed plumbers showing up to do these jobs. And that's not required that they be licensed.
It is. In the county. It is in the county.
Okay.
So they have to be licensed.
Outside of Roan County, though, we don't require it be a licensed plumber. We just require it to be licensed and insured. So if there is any issues, it's taken care of. A lot of homeowners say, well, we're providing you a licensed plumber, and we're guaranteeing that work a hundred percent. So a lot of folks will still say, well, I'll take that. And it is cheaper as well most of the time. So that's how we got to where we are today with it. But our goal is not to take away work from anyone.
See, I don't have a problem with if you, you know, with all the plumbers around here. I've talked to a lot of them. Nobody has a problem with you coming out and saying that, you know, you bid, you know, just like an insurance company, here's your money, twenty-five hundred dollars to do that job. If you can do it for that, then do it. If you can't, then get somebody else or whatever. None of the plumbers have a problem with that. What they have a problem with is, is when it's being called in, they're saying that they can't do it.
The two scenarios that I, they called me directly about is a plumber was standing there saying, I'm here, I'm ready to do the work. Well, there was no second quote in the first place. They just wanted to do the work then, but that would have gone against the policy anyway. So there still had to be a second quote. We go down there, quote it, customer says, I wanted a licensed plumber here anyway. Go ahead and start the work. So those are the two that came directly to me. I'm not sure about the ones you're specifically talking about. But that's one of the things that I've encountered from my position is, if I've had any complaints about it, is there's been a plumber standing there, ready to do the work, and my backup, a licensed technician, not even a plumber, and we say, well, you've got to have a second quote anyway. We send our team down there. They quote it, we do the job, and we're done, and it's guaranteed.
Mr. Bowlen, we've got so many contracts, I can't remember all of them. Is there anything in the contract with with water relief that says you have to use X plumber, Y plumber, Z plumber? I can't remember anything, and I don't think there is.
Not to my knowledge. I can't tell you that the way ours reads is it does say that you have to contact us as the administrator to get your quotes lined up and get with us about that. So really, that's where it's supposed to start. And then at that point, if it's two quotes, you choose whichever one, but we're paying for what we will quote. But it's just stating that we have the right to refuse to use any one that we like.
So if, say, for an example, if I called in and my water line busted, so I called the insurance company, do I talk to them, or do they transfer me over to the plumbing company?
So we would, and so let's say it's an emergency. If you call any plumber and they come in and fix that temporary leak so that you can then file a claim, we're gonna work with you on that. But if you called in to file a claim, we are going to transfer that to our plumbing company, say, there's an emergency. Can you get out there immediately and take care of this customer? Because that's.
But if it's not an emergency, they can?
We can regularly schedule it however you see fit, but I mean, we will be contacting our plumber. We'll let them know that, hey, there is a customer of ours in need that's gonna need a quote. And we wanted to make it smoother for the customers as well. It's not always easy to find two plumbers to get you a quote, and you could be sitting there for a week waiting on that. That was one of the biggest complaints I got before we ever started a plumbing company, is that we, they almost felt like we were holding them hostage. And that was never the goal either. We wanted to make the whole process easier, smoother, faster, so the customer goes from in need of work being done to completed work and back up and running as normal, as quickly as possible.
Does he have anything else on that, anybody?
I've got two or three questions. You know how I am, I've always got questions. Two or three for you, sir. When did you start your own company inside the insurance company?
So it's not truly inside of the insurance company, to be perfectly clear, but we started that back in April, I believe.
Okay.
This is after about two years of us evaluating data and realizing that the cost was growing astronomically in a specific area, and that we need to do something about it.
And then you all have a, I don't want to say telemarketer, but a receptionist or secretary or a project manager or somebody who schedules, takes estimates, and we only require two. So I can give one to my plumber, y'all come in, and then you're affirming that what David said, you pay the cheapest, no matter who it is.
Not necessarily. If it were two competing plumbers, we would look and evaluate the estimate at that point. That's the main reason with the estimates, is to make sure that one of them's not totally out of line. But when we do send our team, I can trust that they're doing it in the best interest of Water Lake Relief and the customer versus their plumbing company.
Yeah, and this company is located in?
Crossville, Tennessee.
In where?
Crossville.
So if you're doing it for Crossville and Roan County, and that's one supplier, what, how has that affected the time in getting it done, the response time?
We have not had anyone that we've had to say, we cannot get to you immediately, because they are dedicated to these jobs. We don't do service, we don't do new constructions, dedicated to Water Lake Relief line protection.
And is that company licensed in Roan County?
They are licensed as a master plumber, which covers them across the state of Tennessee. It's not a licensed business in Roan County.
Just wondering about taxes and all that kind of stuff is where I'm, that's where I'm coming from. And can you check with your, whoever that person is that's taking it, to make sure that we're not telling customers no other plumbers but our plumber? And if we can make sure and explain that to them, I understand that. And then I'm assuming, would you make the other plumber aware of the price and whether or not, or do you notify the customer?
We notify the customer. You know, they provide us, typically, they're the ones providing that first bid, and so it's not like we're sitting there looking at that bid saying, well, yeah, we can do it cheaper. We know we're gonna be able to do it cheaper, just because we can do it at cost. I'm, plumbers paid, taken care of, it's material and time is all that we have to quote. Where most of these other individual plumbers have, they're running a business that they have all those other costs involved with it. And I know that, however that sounds, I mean, we're just trying to provide it as cheaply as possible to your water customers and with the end result being the Water Lake Relief leak protection.
And just looking back, if there's ever any other changes that would affect the seven of us and the five thousand six hundred and twenty-two people that live in Kingston, I would appreciate you notifying the city manager that, look, we've done this, we're gonna do this, this, and this. You may be getting calls just to be on the transparency side, okay?
Sir.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, thank you.
Mr. Bowlen, you have anything?
Yeah, just one question. Would there be any, let's say, customers got an issue, they get their plumber to do a quote, you send your people in, again, your people say it's twenty-five hundred dollars. If the customer goes back to their guy and he says, yeah, I'll do it for twenty-five hundred dollars, is there any scenario under which you all would override that and say, well, no, we're not gonna let your guy do it?
I mean, that's a hard scenario for me to think about how exactly we would handle that, because and I hate to say this, but to me, that's just that plumber saying, well, I could have done it cheaper. And, you know, if we're there, ready to do the work, and then he says, well, I'll come back and do it. That's up to the homeowner, though. We do have the right in our agreement to say we do not want someone, or and think of your car dealerships and warranty programs with that. They want you to bring that car into them to do that warranty work. I mean, that's basically what this is. But, I mean, we have plumbers that are very well respected, that if they wanted to do a job, I don't have a problem with it. It's just that it's gonna be really hard for them to compete with our price. I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. Again, we're able to do it pretty much at cost.
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Item five, discussion of ordinance twenty-five eleven ten oh one, an ordinance of the city of Kingston, Tennessee, to requalify and reorganize the zoning ordinance of Kingston, Tennessee with amendments. Ms. Mays with the Roan County Planning Office. This has gone through the Planning Commission, and we did pass this a couple of Tuesdays ago. It's just kind of cleaning up some stuff in the zoning ordinance. And Brooke, would you like to address any of it, or does anyone have any questions for Brooke on the requalification of this?
Will this now be the same as Harriman's, and they're separate, and we are, and got different rules? You know, I always hear the deal, well, when you go to Kingston, you gotta do this, but they don't make us do that in Rockwood, and they don't make us do it in Harriman. That's.
Yeah, so Kelly and I worked on this along with Stephanie and Bo Pickle for a good two years. Kind of going through the old zoning ordinance that we had before us, changing some definitions, adding some definitions, clarifying definitions, kind of honing it into the growth that's happening, and hitting different things that we saw a flaw in in the old ordinance. So it addresses those issues, and it's particular to the city of Kingston.
I haven't read it all yet, it was so long, but do we have, I know they're all into it over in Linnor City, in Loudoun County, with rezoning of the school and the property and all this kind of stuff. County Commission split. Everybody's split, and they're trying to kick it back because there's not a plan for the infrastructure and the roads, and we go through all that same procedure with the county.
Yes.
And the city.
So the city has their own growth plan.
Yeah.
The county's future land use plan was done in nineteen ninety-eight. So Mayor Crestwell is very well aware that we are fixing to update our land use plan with that growth in mind. So pretty soon, the county will also have an updated growth plan.
How long will that take? Because the growth's already here. That's the problem, is that we've waited around in Roan County and probably Kingston that we've got all these subdivisions that have our hot topic items today that I don't know if everybody thought about a year and a half ago, but now that everybody's wanting to move to Roan County, you know, everybody wants to have restaurants and RVs and steak houses and but they don't want subdivisions, and they want new schools, but you've got to have rooftops to pay for all that stuff, so then they want to start picking, the ones for it want to pick it this rule, and the ones against it want to pick because of this rule, and just take one rule to try to defeat or to accept one plan or the other, so.
So right now, the land use plan is with the Planning Commission. They have not started working on it as of yet. With Glenn's retirement, they are gonna be having interviews for a new planner position. That planner will come in and work with the Planning Commission. They may have a consultant to help them speed the process along and get it in place. But I do know that's something that's a very high priority for the mayor and for the Planning Commission to get accomplished for the county.
Is Mr. Williams still the chairman of the Roan County Planning Commission?
He is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we'll add that to the agenda for Tuesday night. Thank you, Ms. Brooke. Item six and seven are both with Taylor Poulver of the Building Codes. Discussion of ordinance twenty-five eleven ten two, an ordinance of the city of Kingston, Tennessee, adopting the twenty-twenty-four edition of the International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, including amendments and exclusions pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated sixty-eight one twenty-one oh one. Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. All right, does anyone have any questions starting with, has anyone reviewed ahead of time, or?
I don't know if any, does anyone else have any? Mr. Brown, anything?
Planning Commission, they've already had this and approved it, too?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, I went through it a little bit more in depth at that time, over it.
No drastic changes that would affect anything that's in the planning presently?
No, not, nothing would address or change anything in the planning. Nothing really crazy has happened between these two code changes, and most of the changes have been towards a positive route.
So that would be on both of the ordinances that we have before us today, correct?
Correct. The IRC one is for your residential houses, and the IBC one is gonna be your full collection of your commercial, and it'd be several books within that one included.
Does anyone have any questions on either ordinance we've got, besides what Mr. Brown's asked? Mr. Bowlen.
Question before, but once adopted, and we're up to the twenty-twenty-four, where does this put us in line with the county and the other cities? Do they all already have this adopted, or?
Everyone will have this adopted by the end of the year. So this will be right on track code-wise. We're keeping it equal across the board. No city has come over with any specific changes or anything they've wanted to make, so we're not doing anything special for anyone. And this is on track to be passed across the board for everyone involved.
All right. If there are no questions, we'll have both of those ordinances for Tuesday night on first reading. Item eight and nine, both ordinances have to do with the meaning of the annual budget for the water in the sewer in the city. Ms. Kelly, would you like to, Mr. Bowlen?
All right, before we do that, Brooke wanted to make an introduction. If you, if that's.
Is that okay with you, Chairman?
It'd be fine.
Oh, Mayor, sorry. Wrong commission.
At least you're getting a name right.
So I just wanted to introduce you guys to Reggie Hux. He is the new building official that started two Mondays ago as of now. We're really excited about what he's bringing to the office as far as consistency and helping us digitize some of our permitting processes and some of our procedures. Reggie, do you want to say anything?
You're hilarious. Well, first, I'll tell you something about myself. I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-eight, so I've been doing it a long time for North Carolina. My son moved to Tennessee two years ago after graduating from that state, and it's encouraged us to come. So my wife and I are here. Ford's area, nice pickleball courts, by the way, as I let you know. But, yeah, it's really nice and beautiful.
Thank you. Anything else?
Can you tell us, tell me what your specific duties are? I keep saying "planning official." What is that going to entail?
My whole career has been a building official. So what we do, they split the county executive, the mayor, county mayor, has split department into construction, building, building code, and planning. So planning's gonna be, gonna reside over the courthouse, and we have the building as part of the house for planning and building. So our job is part of construction, is the building code. So once the land development's done, and the building's going up, we're in charge of building and construction.
Is that something that Frank did?
He was an inspector.
He was an inspector, yes.
Yes.
So those building inspections codes are all be under you, and then planning will be under the new person.
Correct.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, fine.
Okay, Ms. Kelly, it's all yours now.
So I'll just go over briefly. I know that there's a long number on this amendment this time, but I can explain it. First of all, two departments, the police department has some donation money that they're just wanting to appropriate, so that's in this amendment. And then Public Works is needing to utilize two thousand dollars they got surplus for educational costs. Apparently, it's like two thousand dollars for the CBL now. So we're appropriating that, and also, as you know, Public Works has been working down Race Street doing the sidewalk, and it looks great, but they're gonna add those new block holes. And we didn't want to take that out of tense budget, so we're moving some money around to appropriate that money. Also, we had some engineering costs and then some costs that on the demolition of the house that was tore down. So we're having to take those amounts out of fund balance and appropriate that. And then on the general fund side, the last thing is, we decided to raise Christmas donations this year, and so you'll see a lot of line items for each department, which include their retirement amounts that appropriates the amount of money we needed to do that. And we took that out of line items in the budget, not fund balance. So we just kind of moved some money around with that. And then on the water side, it's just our normal T that are, you know, that we're gonna see continuing to be amended as we go until that grants.
Mr. Bowlen.
Just an update in reference to the demolition of the house on Third Street. Andrew and I were just talking about that, and we go to court Thursday?
Thursday.
To get, hopefully get permission to force a sale to recoup the cost of that demolition. So hopefully, we'll have some news on that coming up, and that property will be for sale at auction to recoup that, so we'll be getting that back.
Are there any questions on either one of these, the ordinance submitting the annual budgets? Mr. Brown?
That two thirty-six, forty-one, one hundred, two thirty-six, campground engineering, what was that for?
Well, that was cost that we incurred, and I may let them say to talk about this, but they were talking about the Run Street property for the temporary, you know, possibility of using a campground. There was some cost incurred to look at a possibility of that. I just made the mention.
Mr. Bowlen. Tony was asking about the Al Dura engineering cost.
Yeah, that was for the plan that we put together to get that, you know, rough estimate of what could be done with that property. Of course, nothing came of it, but that was their cost for looking at the development of that property for a potential campground, which we took no action on. We still had the.
What did they do? Did they count sites or something, or?
Yeah, they.
What did they get done on it?
Work did they get done on?
They did, uh, they just did a preliminary, what if, what could it, how many sites could it, what would a layout potentially look like? How many sites, if you wanted to do it, how many sites could you get in? Um, it was.
Had it on a drawing, or?
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of that? I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I thought you already, I assumed you had copies of that, so.
I haven't seen it.
I don't think I have.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can, I, I think I have a copy of that, but yeah, we can get you that.
Anything else on either one of those ordinances, Ms. Kelly's got? Okay. Number ten, discussion of request for the City of Kingston, the former area of Little English. Any interest in the alley off Third Street between Sandy McPherson Way and Cumberland Street? Mr. Thompson, I'll let you take this one.
Mayor, this comes down to whether or not council, uh, wants to abandon the alleged interest that the City of Kingston has in this alleyway. I know this has been a topic for debate over the years about the city's interest in this alleyway. If the city were to vote or choose to abandon any interest that we had in that, I believe the appropriate mechanism to do that would be to draft a resolution simply stating that we officially abandoned any interest that the City of Kingston may have in that alleyway, and then allow the other parties that are concerned with it to do as appropriately, but that would effectively terminate the city's interest in that alleyway, and we would be out of it from then on.
So all we need is a, is a resolution saying that we, we don't want nothing to do with it?
That's correct, Mayor.
Basically.
Is this the one that goes behind Kinzer's?
Yes.
But then it, it used to make a right, and it went across the street, and there's still part of that alley, I think, still part of that alley behind the oil express.
No, this is the alley that goes from in front of the jail towards First Baptist Church.
I understand that, but years ago, when the bowling alley, I mean, when the skating rink was there, there was a gravel road, went in front of it, and that it included across the street.
That's true.
Sandy on one side and the, uh, oil change place, it went all the way across there. Behind the preacher's house. What was the lady preacher's name, the square Baptist?
Yeah, so that had to be abandoned when they built the bank, maybe?
No, that, the other part of it, because it would go all the way to the, there were, before the bank was there.
When the Bradshaw House was there.
Yes, yes, so I'm just wondering.
I don't remember the bowling, much less the Bradshaw House.
Or just portions of it, or we've already abandoned it all.
So the, yeah, this is, this has come up, as Andrew said, for years. Uh, we, we dove a little deep into it with Sandy years ago, when Kinzer's, I guess, was the first one to approach us about, about it, and his position then, and, and we had the same, is it was never adopted. So it's not ours to formally abandon or, or sell or give to anybody. It's just, you know, if there is any implied interest, you know, we would basically go on record, say we don't have anything to do with it, and then how it gets divided up among the adjacent property owners, I guess, would be up to, to them or to court, or however that's settled. But this would just kinda take us, uh, out of the equation.
Of course, Kinzer's wanted us to pave that back there before they put their drive-through in. So I just wanna make sure that we don't cut ends or off, that they've got an opportunity.
Every, every one of them, well, the bank hasn't, but the Kinzers and, and the other two there on Cumberland Street have all expressed an interest in it. It would be up to them either to work something out, I guess, or up to a court to decide who gets what. Uh, but, but we just, we would just be removing ourselves from it.
Apartments up there too, and that's where the people that lived in the apartments parked. Up over the Hands of Mercy, there were apartments.
I do remember that part.
And it, the steps came down, and they used that old gravel road as a parking lot.
Yeah.
After the skating, you know, we had a skating rink. After the skating rink was torn down.
For my time.
Yes. History, God, it's, it's, I'm not good at much, but I can remember the whole timing. But that would have been back in seventy-two, three, four, the skating rink was still there then.
Barely.
And this request, uh, now I may have put that in the memo, I don't know, but this, this came to the Planning Commission. Of course, it wasn't, you know, Planning Commission issue, but I think Hands of Mercy was the one that was bringing it up this time. But again, all, all of them have at one point or another expressed some interest in it, so.
So, Mr. Thompson, can you get us a resolution drawn up, what we could do by Tuesday?
I'll prepare it, young.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? If we have any more history questions, I'm sure we're gonna get them. You learn a lot in these meetings, don't you, Tony?
Mr. Reader, did you get all that?
Item eleven, discussion of purchase of a twenty-twenty-five E-sixty R-two series Bobcat compact excavator in the amount of eighty-three thousand, forty-four dollars and forty-one cents at Sourcewell contract pricing. Mr. Bowley.
So Mr. Hamilton apologizes, he had a funeral to attend tonight, he couldn't be here. Um, this is something that, uh, we've been working on for a while as part of his, uh, capital plan. Um, obviously with, with tariffs and, and various things, we're seeing significant price increases. Their, their excavator still works, it's still used every day. It's getting older, it's getting, uh, you know, getting, needing more maintenance. Um, but we have looked at, at getting an additional, and our plan is to keep the one we have, um, either to use it as a backup, or if we get a situation where we have to run two crews at one time, you know, we'll have the ability to do that, but, you know, of everything they use, this is probably, uh, they probably use this piece of equipment more than anything they have. So it's, uh, it's, it's used on every water leak, every, every sewer leak, whatever. So, um, obviously if Kevin was here, he could give you more, uh, details as far as the equipment itself, but we would like to move forward with this, um, with your approval, so we can get that, uh.
Is this, is this a budget item that we put in the budget for this year?
It, it would not be. It would be a capitalized piece of equipment. Michelle can explain that part of the process.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we'll add that.
It's in stock? It is.
That's a good question. Alright, we'll add that Tuesday night. Alright, item twelve, discussion of the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five Mack M D seven brush truck from the General Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, in the amount not to exceed a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars at state contract pricing. If you remember, we were doing, uh, budget earlier this year, we'd talked about, you know, this is one of the things that would help our, our guys in the street department, you know, go from having six people out doing a job to having two people, where the other four could be doing some other, you know, other stuff. Uh, I think Tim and, and Mr. Bowling had, uh, worked hard to find one, and I think everyone saw it out in the parking lot tonight. So, does anyone have any discussions about this? Mr. Bowley.
Uh, I just wanna say, and of course, Tim's here if you have any questions, but he and I talk about this a lot. You know, when we first started doing our ten-year, five and ten-year capital plans, and, and looking at, at things to improve, uh, this was one of the original things we came up with, and of that original capital plan, this was the last item. So you guys have been very gracious in, in what you funded, and, and, you know, the impact that it's made to the department is just hard to put into words with the equipment they have that, that they didn't have before. And, you know, we're proud of the fact that we've been able to do all of this without having to borrow money, uh, for any of it. Um, and, and that's, uh, that's rare, and that's something to be, all of us to be very proud of. Uh, we are, uh, as you know, we are conservative with our fund balance, uh, we have been for years. We do try to, to address what we can with it. Uh, we don't have our audited, uh, fund balance back for the year yet. We have an idea, uh, of, of where that's gonna go, and, and we're happy with that. But we are comfortable, uh, moving ahead with this, if you all are willing. Our, our fund balance can, uh, certainly support it, and I think it's, uh, would be a great investment for the department, so.
Anybody got any discussion? Mr. Reader.
Well, I got a request for, just the other day from one of our citizens about brush pickup, that can we move it to later in November, instead of, cause way the leaves are falling now and all that kinda stuff? So if we do purchase this truck and go on, could we have more than just the two that we normally have scheduled for the year? Can we pick up even more, since the cost is going down too?
Mr. Clark is shaking his head.
Okay.
Any other questions on the, the truck? Mr. Brown.
Always have some. I'm gonna be in favor of this, just because my buddy Tim, I want him to have the best equipment, uh, of anybody around that makes the job easier. This will certainly, uh, do that. But just want to warn everybody that we talked about major expenditures, and I know we're anticipating good balances, fund balances. But, you know, we finally worked it up to where we've got money, we don't have to borrow any money in, uh, April, May to make the end of the year payroll. But just bear in mind that this is, in this last fiscal year, I think that this will be over five hundred thousand dollars that we've taken out for two purchases. And I made the same speech when we bought the land at two hundred and seventy-something thousand, and here's another. Sooner or later, you've got to quit spending big item money so that we can let that fund balance get back up, so we won't be, guys, it, it was terrible. Tim was here, he can tell you where you had to go borrow any money to, to worry about payroll. Through our management and our city manager and our clerks, it's finally, finally, finally got to where that we've got substantial money. That's the first thing I read when I get to report, and I know the mayor does the same thing, is I go to the fund balance and see how much, see how much money we've got, that we've been able to buy new trucks for the Parks and Rec, uh, new fire trucks. And by the way, that's gonna come around the corner quicker than you think, because we're on the last end cycle of the fire truck, the ladder truck, if I had to guess, just remembering when we bought it, that it'll be coming up in the next year or so, and that's, that's gonna be over a million eight, probably. So just remember where your wants are, just because we've got it, don't mean we have to spend it. But I'm gonna be for this. I think it'll, I think it'll help its people. Uh, it'll, it'll take some training on it, I'm sure, but, but Tim does a good job, you know, just like we bought uh, new snow piles and all that kinda stuff. We never know that we've got this stuff until we need it. You know, and then when you need it, and you gotta, next time we have a big storm, we'll wish we had three of these. So we send them out. And I'd be awful careful on sending, I know you shook your head. I don't wanna get like another city, though, and have brush pickup every single day of the week, because if you're not real careful, that'll be what'll happen. I need my picked up today, we run out there and get it, and, you know, it's, it's like a cancer, it spreads. I saw them pick up across the street, and so I'm sure that, that y'all will work on that. And again, while I'm doing all this talking, thank you all so much, so that my job as a council person is so easy, so easy. I don't get all those complaints that I got fifteen, sixteen years ago and had to compete with Mr. Armour. You know, he got, he got forty-seven and a half calls a week before a council meeting, but, but it's just such a pleasure to sit up here anymore, uh, knowing that, that everything runs smoothly. Proud to live here in Kingston, proud to be on the city council, but I'm more proud of our employees. Thank you all so much.
Alright. Thank you, Tim. We appreciate you too. That's the end of the agenda, so I'll go around the room, I'll start with Mr. Reader. Do you have anything, Mr. Reader?
No, sir.
Mr. White?
No, sir.
Mr. Brown?
No, I'll say enough.
Ms. Johnson, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Redwell? Yeah, I had to down. So I'll go into what I've got first. So last month, I was unable to attend, so I know that, um, Paul, uh, Paul Rogers, thank you, I was thinking of Paul Jackson for some reason. Paul Rogers came and talked about the house that's on Ridge Trail Road. Have you had any chance to do anything with that?
We, we get, we had initial contact with him, um, right after that, and got a, a rough idea of what he wanted to do, didn't hear anything else, so I reached out to him last week, um, wanting more information, did not hear anything, haven't heard anything over the weekend. So my plan is to, to hand that off to the city attorney, let him contact him, so.
That'd be fine. I don't know if you guys got a chance to drive up by there and look at it, but it's. Yeah, yeah. Alright, uh, the other thing I got is, like Phillip said, the Fall Festival the other day was great. It, uh, I think it had to be the biggest one we've ever had, that I can think of seeing all the people there. So, thanks to Park and Rec and everybody involved in that. Also, I want to remind everybody that Monday night is our council meeting, or Tuesday night is Veterans, Tuesday is Veterans Day, so we've moved it to Monday night. So that's all I've got. So I'll go with Mr. Thompson, do you have anything? Mr. Bowley, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, just one thing, uh, you all have seen this probably by email, but as you know, we have a, a resurfacing project that we've been waiting for years on, and now it's almost to the point where it's being held up by a big hole in the ground. So just wanted to give you an update on that. We're supposed to have a conference call tomorrow with the engineers, with Rogers Group and T-Dot, to try to come up with a game plan of, of what we, uh, uh, what we need to do to handle that. There is a little bit of, um, contingency funds in Rogers' contract. I don't think it'll be enough to address this, but we do have, uh, over about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state S T P money above and beyond what we need for this project, for the resurfacing project. So what we're hoping is that T-Dot will let us use that to, uh, conceivably, you know, fix this, this issue. We want it fixed right, so once they go in and pave over it, it's not caving in in a year. So, uh, we'll know more i- in the days to come on that, but just wanna let you know, we are working on it, and, and hopefully we'll have that done, so they can come in and finish that project and get that one off the books, so.
It looks really good. Do you get to that sign, is this road closed?
And, and, and we've communicated that with the HOA, letting them know what's going on, and, and like I said, hopefully we'll have a, a plan soon on. We don't really know yet. We don't know, it could be, uh, you know, something rotted in the, in the bed. It could be a, a cave under there, really, until we get it dug down. But we estimate it's at least ten feet deep, maybe, maybe more. So it's, uh, it's not gonna be an easy fix, but we wanna do it right, so.
Anybody have anything else for Mr. Bowley? Ms. Kelly, do you have anything?
I just wanted to say, yeah, I remember when we were worried about how we were gonna get Christmas lights in it, because we didn't have a bucket truck. And now, I don't know, my question is, can we do brush pickup and Christmas lights at the same time? He's already laughing, but, you know?
No, he's just like.
He's back there.
The new truck would pick the light up.
No, no, but like, you know, two crews, so, cause you know, but hi- his job is, kids are running into each other, but anyway.
I think. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything?
Nothing other than I have a replacement page for your charter book, if y'all keep up with paper charters.
Anybody got anything else? Alright, this meeting's adjourned.